Patients communications and administration, we have two to disagree. A motion that's a large gathering permit, and also the same large self-vested large gathering permit. Both of these churches have always had in the past their festivals. Never been any problem with either one of them, they do have security. But I don't want to come up just because you're doing this. Yes, yes, they're holding at the same time. Motion by council, second by council, all in favor, seconded by state senate. opposed, motion passed, six to zero. In central general, the council for register law here approved on May twenty eighth, twenty thirteen. Also approved in the town council, that's a report from twenty thirteen. Motion by council, stand seconded by council. Town, all in favor, seconded by state senate. opposed, motion passed, six to zero. Standing committees, are getting finance, passing the motion.
First, my first minister, I'd like to make a motion that we advertise events for the West 77th Avenue project. This is how we can recover the whole school business, across the market, and be used utilizing these cheap lines. So, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to advertise events, as far as wondering what it would have been.
Uh, motion by council, second by council, stand, all in favor, seconded by state senate. Talk to your parents?
Uh, I have one other question. Um, uh, reennobling cases, uh, earlier, we, uh, made a recommendation to the full council, that a supplemental agreement number two with Father Raymond Seifer for the US thirty four project. And, uh, twenty two thousand dollars, uh, this, the increase directly due to many utilities delayed that this project has experienced. This claim will be made from Mariville Road fund, and that's unfortunately because it's construction supervision and there were delays. It's a hundred percent on the town of Mariville. Um, at this time, I'll make a motion that we enter into supplemental agreement number two with Father Raymond Seifer for the US thirty four project.
Motion by council, pettits, second pettits, and town ladies. For the super station, is that true?
13-09 and ordinance of town of Maryville Lake County Indiana transferring certain lines within certain categories. And not by distinction or kind of. A decrease of several rounds of eight hundred seventy five dollars in the case of some about eight hundred seventy five dollars for. Do we have any discussion?
What do you prefer, Matt or Rob?
Both if I'm talking to the paddles. Um, even if I counsel and spare, do we have any uh public comments? Any public comments? Any public comments? Single public comment, don't call me Mr. Nancy. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, motion carries six to zero. 13-14 and ordinance of the town of Maryville Lake County Indiana transferring certain money from Mississippi Street tip debt service fund into the Mississippi Street project. Done. Uh, for a decrease of one million dollars and an increase of about one million dollars. Motion by councilman Darren seconded by councilwoman Paddles. Any discussion? Any more discussion, do we have any public comments? Any public comments? Any public comments? Single public comments, don't call me Mr. Nancy.
Not only is it hard to speak.
Yes, motion approved, six to zero. 13-14 and ordinance of the town of Maryville Lake County Indiana transferring certain money from Mississippi Street tip debt service fund into the Mississippi Street project. Done. Uh, for a decrease of one million dollars and an increase of about one million dollars. Motion by councilman Paddles seconded by councilwoman Spare. Um, any discussion? Any more discussion, uh, we have any public comments? Any public comments? Any public comments? Single public comments, don't call me Mr. Nancy. Yes, motion approved, six to zero. 13-15 and ordinance of the town of Maryville Lake County Indiana appropriating additional ways to send the Mississippi Street tip project road and Maryville Road project funds for the year twenty thirteen. Not included in the current budget. A um, Maryville Road project funds of one million dollars, tip funds of one million dollars, no change. And I have motion for the year. Motion by councilman Paddles seconded by councilwoman Darren. We have any discussion? Any discussion? Single uh, discussion, do we have any public comments? Any public comments? Any public comments? Motion, any public comments, don't call me Mr. Nancy. Yes, motion approved, six to zero. 14-17 and the ordinance of the town of Maryville Lake County Indiana prohibiting the use of trail bikes, ATVs, drill bike, go karts, and other recreational vehicles designated for. Or use the town of Maryville by putting uh, kinds of product safety hazards resulting from the operation of certain motorized vehicles that are not on vehicles of public property. Or causing need to regulate such activities. The town council seeks to improve the health and safety of individuals living in residential areas within the town of Maryville. The town council seeks to eliminate or reduce the harmful impacts of noises to the operation of certain motorized vehicles and motor vehicles on property zones residential and agricultural of the town of Maryville. We also desire to achieve a reduction in the overall number of noise in such areas in order to prevent a company. Any discussion? Motion by councilman Paddles seconded by councilwoman Geraldo. At this time, do I have any public comments? Any public comments? Do you have any public comments? Please come up and say your name. Anyone else have some public comments? Single additional public comment, don't call me Mr. Nancy. Yeah. Not only. We love you. Yeah. Yeah. Motion approved, six to zero. Going on to resolutions. Resolution fifteen dash oh nine, a resolution of the town of Maryville Lake County Indiana prohibiting economic revaluation areas where as India still six one dash one twelve dash one. From now on, the basic of property taxes attributable to redevelopment or redevelopment. Um, new solutions will make factories equipped with new research and development equipment, new logistical distribution equipment, new information technology equipment, economic revaluation. Whereas whereas the town council has determined the following in accordance of the rule state with benefits and promote for all for all citizens and taxpayers of the town. Do I have any discussion?
Motion approved, second.
Motion by councilman Paddles seconded by councilwoman Geraldo. So if all is fair, please, if I say yes. Close, motion carries six to zero. We want to initiate an action. Commissioner Carol Wobinski, who's here on the news, Karen here, Karen Lusinski, I'm the office of upfit sunlight. Commissioner Karen Wobinski, owner of Mariana Wobinski, requests a special exception. I put no purpose for Montessori school ages three to six years old. Location called five hundred Lincoln Avenue, Z one, zoning C dash three, public commercial. Case numbers, one four E four dash zero four one three. For this position only at this location, only for this school, only. Why would you like to see this school must be without fire code requirements? Can I talk of any questions? Any discussion? Single discussion, I just want to add, the Montessori schools are supposed to be around, I can remember their excellent way to let children get ready for school. Okay, motion by councilman, not only seconded by councilwoman Geraldo. Not only. Don't call me Mr. Nancy. Not only. I'll try. Hi. There is. Yes. Let's go to our chat. And we're going to have to do. Anybody else? Any little comments?
I guess I had a president, I agree with uh, to Mr. Geraldo, I guess, before I make this announcement, or this suggestion. Uh, to the rest of the council, we're talking first, basically, uh, about the two thousand thirteen meeting. So we may or may not be able to, we may or may not be able to afford. Um, I obviously have a benefit of some of the district district strategy in my head. The Lord's six, uh, John, I hope you've had a chance to talk to Jim Bennett. Uh, I haven't always seen him, I don't know. And I've never seen his phone talk on yet. What I was gonna suggest with council before the next line commission workshop, uh, I don't know, being here. One of the couple of joint meetings of public work and, but just line answers, maybe to talk about paving. If you guys wanna do that at five thirty, on Tuesday, the floor, up to you. Again, I'm on record right now, based on what Chris and I talked about. I probably don't mean any neighborhood paving, most of my stuff, the things that I wanna pave are gonna be coming out of district. Things that I need to be done in fourth sixth, so. Whenever you were talking about dealing with topics on the bond issue. Um, I'll still be able to satisfy my residents through other innovative, they like to say, outstanding sources, so. Uh, I'm not, I don't, we wanna collaborate through committees and, and talk about what you guys wanna do for two thousand thirteen on paving. We got it. I don't know, or another conference, I don't know, I mean, we have enough time, there's the, should we be starting to think about, and I guess that we all know. I'm telling you, I'm pretty sure the weather comes out. You know, I'm asking stuff, but I guess we'd be eligible from the district, so. I'm thinking out of the next as far as. That's something that's going to help, I just think. I think it's like five thirty on the floor. But maybe you try and press Bennett, see if we can, if we can reach those folks. Maybe if you and Jane and Bruce, I'll follow. Well, there's two that made a hurry up. Areas. All right, why don't we go into two thousand five thirty on the floor, let's do a public listen. Let's just try and have a committee meeting for two thousand thirteen paving. Five thirty, we have, we have a look after. Three, four, and I will look up.
Anything else under four thousand, they know your business, they're in your business. They know you do lessons, public comments, you are wishing to come up and speak, please tell us. Please come up and say your name. Here I am, two minutes, three minutes, I'm like. Um, I do know that our fathers happened to be our town attorney, they're on CPD. And the little guy in the front row, he needed the town council president. And he is my protege, aren't you? That's what it said in the paper. And you don't have a protege yet? And one of these days, you will be on the town council. And he would take a picture of us to say how he would do it, and then truly goes up. And for Donald, he's in that air, he's uh, he is autistic. He has a smaller bit of phenomenal job on a virtual loan and law. Because it is very difficult in trying to do another job, or as perhaps or something, extremely talented, extremely talented. And we have the arts and crafts of a lot of that, um, about that from that. But I mean, he's destroying his pictures, you know, it's, it's all on, I guess, he doesn't want to give a picture of us, or how I'm gonna do this. We were not affected, you are who we are, to compare that to, we don't get any better than that. You know, when you actually have that, who we are, you know?
I'm president, I'm like, yeah, that's more, you have your message in your head.
So could I, I want to be.
I know what you wanna be. Okay, among other things, uh, you're the creator of the level twelve, you know? Level fourteen, council members should know, I think it's created a comic book. Group of characters almost the in level fourteen, and then initially committed their mission is to do good things in the community and fight thefts.
Thank you, that's very talented, Coach Martin.
I'm here, I'm buying the car. Uh, I'm spending, I am a thirty year old, it's two weeks of the month. I'm tired of the worst. I'm all the way now, but I understand you. I don't know, I don't know, I want to go, I want to try that again.